The May 20th City Council meeting for the city of Issaquah is called to order at 7:30 PM. And the council and I invite those who are present to join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the city council agenda this evening is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on topics of interest or concern to them. And those may be items that are on the agenda for this council, the council meeting this evening, or they may be other topics that are not on the agenda, whichever it is that you prefer. And the guidelines for participating in audience comments are that we ask that you please come over to the lectern and use the microphone so that you may be seen and heard by those who are viewing the council meeting this evening, whether it be in the audience here in council chambers, or if people are watching on Channel 21, our government access channel. We do have a portable microphone also available for people if they wish to participate. We further ask that you state your name, your address, and then if you wish to state a relationship to the city that you feel is important for us to know, for instance, you are a property owner, a resident, a business owner, whatever it is that you feel is significant to tell us, you may do so at that time. We further ask that comments be limited to five minutes or fewer, and if you have written comments, please submit them to the city clerk. And with that, I will ask if anyone has signed up to speak during audience comments.
Yes, I have several. Tom Holtz followed by Gail Twelves.
I live at 6135 Mink Street Northwest in Olympia. And my, I have been asked here to represent the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. Basically, I've worked in water and stormwater for many, many years, 40 years, and I used to be an administrator for the Thurston County Drainage Manual. I wrote the Thurston County Stormwater Manual and then was appointed as administrator. This injection well is, will, will put contaminants into the water, and the list of contaminants in stormwater is very long, and it grows longer with each year of new research. I have included a table at the end of my written comments which lists a few of the contaminants regularly found in stormwater. The column on the left, it represents the number of samples in which EPA found those contaminants. For instance, the very top one, lead, 94% of the samples contain lead, and the bottom one, fluoranthene, 10% of the samples were found. As you can see, most of them, well, all of them, were found at one time or another. The ones with a double asterisk on them are poly-nuclear aromatic hydrocarbons, PAHs. Those are carcinogenic. All of the contaminants can make you sick, and some are lethal. The proposed injection well appears to violate the WAC 173-218, which is the Underground Injection Well Code of the State of Washington. You have to read it carefully because the WAC had to cover a great number of possibilities for injection of underground water, but it is pretty clear that the intent is to protect groundwater and certainly to protect drinking water supplies. This is the principal document that the state uses to protect groundwater. And one of the elements in this code is, relates directly to stormwater injection systems. And in that one, they iterate that you must have a sufficient Vado zone, which is to say a dry, unsaturated zone between the ground surface and the aquifer. And of course, that's somewhat subjective, but in this case, it's, can be as little as 11 feet, I've been told, that they've measured seasonal high groundwater at 11 feet below the soil. And it's my opinion that for a drinking water supply for many hundreds of people, that this is not sufficient. Any contaminant that's dissolved, such as pesticides, gasoline, many PAHs, will go right through that Vado zone without any treatment, whatever. The thing that is particularly frightening about this proposal is that it connects directly to a storm drainage system, catch basins in the street all through Issaquah Highlands. Those catch basins, each one is a direct link to the water supply. That means anyone, an irate neighbor, kids on a spree, anyone can poison the well by simply dumping a contaminate into the stream. I want to just end by saying that when I was a stormwater administrator for Thurston County, I would not have approved this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Twelves, followed by Francie Peto.
Good evening, council members, mayor, staff. My name is Gail Twelves. I live at 19727 Southeast 19th Street in Samamish. I am a customer of the water with Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. I am commenting this evening as an individual. I'd like to respond to a number of statements that were published by the city in recent weeks. And at the May 6th City Council meeting, Madam Mayor, you said that the city of Issaquah applied for the ecology permit, and that draft would be available for public comment and review, which is part of our open and transparent process. So let's talk about the open and transparent process. The public comment and review period is actually a state requirement for ecology action. To suggest that this is part of your transparent and open process is, I felt, a little misleading. And why was the city of Samamish completely unaware that this permit application was even out there, even pending? They didn't know anything until a citizen met with the city council and city administrator and let them know that this was pending, and this affects a great deal of their citizens in their drinking water. At your May 8th meeting, the residents of Klahani were here, and a flyer was passed out. And in this flyer, it said that there would be no change to their water and sewer district, that it would remain with the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. Yet this is in direct contradiction to your own map showing the future retail service area for utility services. And the map clearly showed Klahani and surrounding communities. I'm wondering if this was open and transparent to Klahani. Do they know this? You stated that you conducted a study about assumption. However, public records show that the talk of assumption and to control the district's wells actually goes back to 2008. More recent records documents implementation plans for assumption process. This doesn't sound like a study to me. Your website is called, has a section called Our Water, Our City. I'd like to have you entertain the fact that this is a regional resource. It's for all citizens in both cities, and particularly for those who live on Lake Samamish. This water flows into the lake. Your website also says that it has a proven track record for working with other jurisdictions. City Samamish right now would not agree as far as their, their way of dealing with you on the east side fire and rescue. Your website also says Issaquah is willing to work with the district to improve customer service for ratepayers in North Issaquah. The implication here is that the water district has not been cooperative, when in fact, in 2009, the district offered to share in the cost of a water treatment facility, just to ensure that the water be accurately treated and ensure that the water was safe to drink. The district also tried to bring Issaquah to the table to be part of a regional discussion on the matter of water, and, and this was turned down. Also, did you know that the water district suggested mediation to Issaquah and to resolve the L rig assumption issues? And neither your staff nor your mayor even responded to that invitation. And would your taxpayers approve of a multimillion dollar expenditure for something like assumption when you're stating that this is to address customer confusion and enhance customer service? We're talking about millions of dollars here. The other interesting thing about this is that you can't find it anywhere on your budget. It wasn't anywhere in 2012, wasn't anywhere in 2013, and even your staff can't find it. That's not very open and transparent. So it seems like the city's been plotting to take over the district's well so it can infiltrate contaminated stormwater at a much higher rate than two CFS, more like up to six or nine CFS. And this is far more than even ecology considers reasonable. And that is extremely porous soil underneath the L rig. All those contaminants would get pushed right through with no choice of being filtered out at all. And that's all in the name of being open and transparent. You know, I have to say that as a citizen of Samamish, you've done a lot of really, really great things in this city, particularly in the last 15 years. I would just like to request that you go back to being team players, being regional players, and work on this water issue for the benefit of all of us, not just for the city of Issaquah. Thank you so much.
My name is Francie Greth Peto, and I live at 22040 Southeast 40th Court in Issaquah. And Madam Chair, distinguished council members, I'm here tonight, I've come before you tonight to tell you that I'm concerned about our water. As a resident of Providence Point Community, and I'm speaking solely for myself, I understand that the water service we currently receive may change greatly in our future. I come from a frame of reference, and my recent research, which obviously is not as deep as Gail Twelves' research, but it's what I could do. This frame of reference informs me that a change is not necessary, prudent, affordable, nor safe. The coined phrase, "If it's not broke, don't fix it," comes to my mind. I feel I am served well by the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. I feel confident with the business practices of their board and with the quality of water that I drink from my faucet. As a citizen of Issaquah, I am first of all concerned with the future safety of our drinking water. As I understand it, the Department of Ecology is on the brink of giving the city of Issaquah a permit to discharge polluted water from the L rig into the aquifer, which rests both above and adjacent to a clean deep water well. If the city of Issaquah transfers their water utility service area, the aforementioned might very well be possible. There are those who say that the well water, if polluted by the L rig discharge, can be treated to bring it to public standards. Do not, please, please do not make it possible or necessary for a good well to require to be treated before I can drink the water. Secondly, the cost of the water service boundary transfer will be very, very steep. I read a figure today about one and a half million, and I do not stand on that because I am not sure all of what that would cover. But it seems to me that it's a huge expenditure for a service that we already have. We being, my neighbors and I, who are already being served by the SPWSD. With that, I close my discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Last on my list is Peter Hammerschlag.
Yeah, I sent already a letter.
Okay, thank you.
So my name is Peter Hammerschlag. I live at 24821 Southeast 37th Place in Klahani, so perhaps soon to be annexed, and we own a house there. So, and we're getting our water from the Samamish Water and Sewer District. So first of all, I want to support all three previous speakers. I believe that they covered a good number of details quite well. I also sent in a letter to the city council with some of my concerns, and I received back a letter from Ms. Eva Friesinger, your mayor, which I very much appreciate. I really do. And one of the reasons I do appreciate it, that it shows that you respect your errors in thought, the, you're addressing a number of very good issues, like the value of infiltration and so on. But the one issue that we are really all concerned about is that the infiltration is too close to the point where the water is taken out. That's the key issue, and so that has to be addressed. And it seems to me that for some reason, though an obvious mistake was made, it's not corrected. Now, I do want to point out that in today's complex world, we all make mistakes, and I'm telling the young engineers who work for me, at least once, often more times per week, never to, all to learn. So I learn too, and I make mistakes, even now that I have some gray hair. So I don't hold it against anybody to make mistakes, but when we discover that, I think it should be corrected, and I think this should be corrected. The lower reed infiltration gallery probably shouldn't have been built where it is built, but now that it is built, something has to be done to correct it. Either you pipe the water out, or maybe you put the wells somewhere completely else. I don't know. These are details that the water experts can find solutions for, but that is, I think, the approach that should be taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other people who have signed up? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak who has not had an opportunity to speak this evening?
My name is Paul Oostmeyer, and for the clerk, it's O-O-S-T-M-E-Y-E-R, usual spelling for Paul. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I live at 305 207th Avenue Northeast in Samamish, and I've been a resident there since 1989. I'm here speaking for a small, informal organization called Citizens for Samamish. We number about 20 people variously, sometimes more, sometimes less. And the one thing that unites us tonight, and in the recent past, is the fact, the apparent power grab for the wells that are part of the Samamish Water District. And the fact that we apparently see good wells, good water, being potentially polluted with injection of what is clearly, as Mr. Walsh pointed out, stuff that can hurt you. And to put a hard word on it, I think that's foolish, and I think it's irresponsible, and I don't think it should be happened, I don't think it should happen, and that's pretty much the consensus of the small group that I represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present this evening who wishes to speak who has not had an opportunity to speak? Anyone else? Third call, is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening who has not had an opportunity hearing and seeing no one else? Public comments are closed. Next on the council's agenda this evening is an item of special business, and that is a presentation by Ron Postama of King County on local options for transit and roads.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ron Postama, Assistant Director for the King County Department of Transportation. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to talk with you about local transportation funding for metro transit, for county roads, for city streets, and other local needs. And I want to go back first to kind of the spring of 2012, where the state legislature was considering a proposal from King County to address local option funding. A version had passed the Senate, a version had passed the State House. They didn't get together at the last minute, didn't pass it, so we did not get a local option tool out of the 2012 legislative session. One of the things we heard from legislators is one of the reasons they felt they didn't come to closure on that issue was the county and the cities weren't exactly on the same page in terms of how we should proceed to address needs. And there also was the fact that a larger state package to deal with state highway and ferry funding was not on the table at that point. So one of the things that happened in the interim last fall was that the elected officials and staff from the Sound Cities Association, King County, and Seattle got together to at least rectify that first problem. You know, can we get together and have a common position on what our transportation needs are at the local level, and, you know, what are the tools to kind of fix them? In terms of the needs, we got a technical team of engineers working on the issue of coming up with common definitions and categories to make sure that we were all talking the same language in terms of needs. And I want to highlight for you, because you're a city, what we came up with in terms of city needs. And that for the prospective period, the next six years looking out, was a total, and this is all the 39 cities here, was a total need of just over $8 billion, and funding in hand of about $4 billion. We had about half the money we need to do the projects that we would like. And we looked at that in four different categories of need. First, there's the ongoing operation and maintenance need. It's, you know, the street plowing, replacing traffic signals, et cetera, minor patching of streets. And then the, the second category was preservation. This is largely arterial and other roadway preservation, you know, the more substantial overlay work. There was also bridges, and on that list was the Dogwood Street Bridge, actually, from your own city. And then there was a large mobility improvement category. This was the adopted transportation improvement programs from each city. So there was several projects on there, obviously, from the city of Issaquah. That total need, again, we had about half the money. How we looked at the revenue was to look at what actually had been collected and spent by cities in the prior three-year period, took the high point, actually, on the revenue list, and then inflated that out based on what those kind of revenue sources, be they gas tax, property tax, grants, or other fees, might be expected to generate. What that made clear is that this gap is caused in part by the fact that a lot of the current revenue sources we have for transportation aren't growing with inflation. So while costs typically go up, the revenue sources, gas tax in particular, is not going up. In a lot of places, property tax is not going up because of the 1% cap. So a lot of our revenue tools are constrained, and our costs have been going up. Some of the specifics in terms of the city of Issaquah that are in this number were, there was about $130 million of need, and your own staff probably has even better numbers. We took, you know, kind of a consistent methodology across all the cities, the county, et cetera. So, but there was, in the numbers, we developed $130 million of need in the city of Issaquah. That included $40 million over that six-year period for operation and maintenance, a little over $30 million for roadway and other kinds of preservation activities. There was the Dogwood Street Bridge replacement. And then there was about $56 million of mobility improvements, things like work on Newport Way, the whole North Issaquah roadway network improvement, and East Lake Samamish was kind of listed, but it didn't have a number, so I'm not sure if that was in the one or not. So, again, a lot of need, and there was about $60 million of projected revenue, or $70 with inflation, to cover that need. So you had a $60 million shortfall over that time period. And that was not atypical for cities or the county. County road needs are actually in worse shape. We also looked at metro transit needs. There, we were trying to look at the whole issue of what has happened with sales tax. That's the big problem for metro transit right now. And you've had a briefing in your transportation committee about, you know, what might happen if there's not a revenue fix for metro transit. And I have details on that, too, if you'd like to get into that. So what might be a fix? The elected officials, you know, including your own mayor, you know, talked about what was a possible fix, and the county elected officials, city elected officials got together and came up with a joint proposal to the legislature to look at increasing car fees and gas tax to kind of close that gap. And details on that are in a nice brochure we put together jointly with Sound Cities Association and the city of Seattle. The hope was that the legislature, if we could agree on what the need was and, and how the revenue sources to meet it, might give that better consideration, and they actually have. They have, in the House Transportation Bill 1954, basically included this recommendation that we jointly made to them. So that's, that's kind of nice, when you go down and, you know, make a recommendation and people listen. So that option is in front of the legislature now. You know, we hope that they follow through on it, but if they don't, there is a couple facts to bring up. One is what happens to roads if they're not improved. And this is a particular problem we are having in unincorporated King County, but I think you'll face that here in the city as well. The point at which you want to get to a road and repave it is before it starts getting really expensive to do. And that is at the point where you've started to see some deterioration. This is the pavement condition index for roads, and once they hit about 70, you know, you're at the point that you need to get in there and do something quick, because if you don't, what will happen? in there and do something quick, because if you don't, what will happen is the subbase of the road begins to deteriorate from infiltration of water and other, and you could end up having the cost go up exponentially. So this is, this is a reason we think it's important that we collectively start to address our needs in terms of road repair. So that's one thing that happens if you don't pay attention to keeping up with transportation funding. And then the other, and again, you've gotten a briefing on this, that's your transportation committee, is we're going to need to start next fall cutting metro transit service by about seventeen percent countywide. We have adopted guidelines to look at how to do that. And, you know, this is a map that shows, you know, some of the effects of, of just applying those guidelines to the amount of money we have. So we're hoping that we can get a revenue fix to this problem and we don't have to go down that road because it is not a good road either in terms of streets or a good road in terms of transit. We've had some public input on the issue in terms of metro transit recently at a public hearing. We've had a little over fourteen hundred people either provide verbal testimony, written comment, or email comment. They overwhelmingly say they would like to see new revenue and not transit service cuts by ninety-two to eight. So we hope that that will mean something to the legislature as well and that we'll be able to proceed with sound transportation funding. So thank you for allowing me to talk a little bit about this. I think it's, you know, timely that people think about that issue.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the, in the handout, there, there's a proposed package of local transportation funding tools listed. Is this just a menu to select from? Or are all of those tools needed to address the concerns that you talked about? And would these tools, the local option transportation funding tools, would these be a King County Council decision? Or would these tools go to voters for approval?
There's three specific tools. One is an increase in the state gas tax with some distribution back. And that would obviously not involve either local voters or councils. The second is a vehicle fee that each city would have a decision on. And that, as proposed in the package from the county and the cities, and as is being considered in the legislature, would be up to each council to decide. And then there's a countywide motor vehicle excise tax. And as proposed, we said it could either go to the people or be enacted by the council. As it's moving to the legislature, they're saying pretty clearly, that's a big enough tax, we think the voters should have the final say on that. So that, I think, would be a voter-approved tax.
Thanks, Ron.
Other questions from the council this evening? All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is a presentation on the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery Monitoring. And this is an update.
Good evening, council, and thank you for inviting me here. Can I start?
You may.
Thank you. Timing looks good. We just finished the same presentation to the Samamish City Council, so we'll repeat it now. Now I have some practice.
Could you let us know who you are, please?
My name is Dan Irvin, from the city of Issaquah. Yes, the PowerPoint, please. And again, my name is Dan Irvin from the city of Issaquah. And the council has asked for, and I'm here tonight to deliver, a presentation on recent events and status for the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. I have a PowerPoint presentation that I will go through. Most of the presentation will be oral. The PowerPoint slides are just graphics. And I just gave this presentation to the Samamish City Council. We were in a very compressed, for time there, and I had to race through that. So I'm a little ramped up, and I'm going to try to slow it down so that we can make it a little bit more digestible. But if I begin to race ahead, if somebody maybe could just cue me on that. I really want to talk about three things tonight, and I have the presentation kind of broken up into three categories. The first is, what exactly is the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery and the system that supports that? Second is, some of the history of that system and recent events that have culminated in the completion of some monitoring data, which will then be used by ecology to render an opinion about operating the gallery. And the last, I want to share the monitoring results from that effort with you and describe the next steps. So the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery, we refer to that by the acronym LREG. LREG just stands for Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. There's some logic behind the name. It's actually situated on a piece of property that was owned by the Reed Sand and Gravel Company. It's the lower part of their property, and there is a stormwater infiltration gallery on that piece. So the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery, aka LREG. This is a map of the greater Issaquah area. You can see I-90 kind of snaking through the bottom of the map. And the white boundary is generally the outline of Issaquah Highlands. Issaquah Highlands was permitted in nineteen, or was enabled in nineteen ninety-six under development agreement. That development agreement had a chapter detailing and governing the construction and implementation of stormwater systems within Issaquah Highlands. That effort was the result of a multi-year assemblage of experts and community stakeholders known as the Water Task Force. It included representatives from the city, from the district, from King County, from the public. That Water Task Force provided input into the development agreement, and they basically defined the policies for and the standards for implementing stormwater treatment and disposal in Issaquah Highlands. As part of that, and embedded within the development agreement, is an obligation for the city to do a variety of things, two of them germane to this discussion. One is to maintain base flows in the north fork of Issaquah Creek. The other is to maintain recharge to the Lower Issaquah Valley Aquifer, which is the source of drinking water for plateau residents and city residents. So the city of Issaquah and the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District both have water production wells within the Lower Issaquah Valley that's recharged by stormwater in part from Issaquah Highlands. So through a SEPA process and EIS and the development agreement, there were specific standards that the city bound themselves to contractually in recharging the aquifer and maintaining the supply to those wells. Within Issaquah, within the greater Issaquah Highlands area, only part of that flows into the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. And in this graphic, it's the part represented in the two white shaded areas. So these two areas, the southern one is the area generally around Swedish Hospital. The northern one is the area generally around the YWCA and the new Regency Theaters. Approximately eighty-one acres, that's about the size of Bellevue Square. Stormwater from rooftops, streets, landscape areas collects in a conventional system into pipes. Those pipes flow downhill, which in this case is generally to the west, and they converge at that blue dot that you see on the map, and that's the Upper Reed Stormwater Pond. Within this basin and within this area, treatment is provided by three separate facilities. So there's source treatment within the basins, there's treatment within the Upper Reed Pond, which is the blue dot. By the way, that pond is a certified dam, and it's designed to contain the one-hundred-thousand year storm. So as far as ponds go, that is a very large pond, even in comparison with other facilities in Issaquah Highlands. After water is collected in that pond where it's detained, it's split into two streams. One stream goes to the north fork of Issaquah Creek to meet our obligation, the SEPA and Development Agreement obligation for maintaining base flows in North Fork, Issaquah Creek. And part of the water discharges to the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. It's metered out by an orifice, and the maximum rate is controlled by that. Now originally, the discharge to the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery was at a rate much higher than it is today. But through events which I'll describe in a minute, that rate was reduced. And in combination with that reduction in rate was a redesign and a rebuilding of the entire Issaquah Highlands stormwater system so that that lower rate would be compatible with the rest of the facilities. So the Wash Dot Detention Pond and the First Avenue Pond were all added to Issaquah Highlands to compensate for the fact that we knew we were going to reduce the average discharge rate at the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. So coming out of the pond, which is the blue dot, the water goes downhill to the green dot, and that is the location of the infiltration gallery. And my next slide is going to be a blow-up of this, so you'll get a little more detail here in a minute. The red dot to the west of that are the city's production wells. And the yellow dots are the district's production wells, the closest one being Well Nine, the two further away being Wells Seven and Eight. So now I'm going to zoom in on the drainage basins and those well facilities. So here you can see a little more detail of those drainage basins. The pond, the irregular-shaped object. The infiltration gallery, which is a buried perforated pipe that is several hundred feet long, and it's part of a more complex facility. The pipe itself is not all that's there. There's a bioswale there, there's metering controls, there's water quality monitoring equipment. It's a fairly complicated and fairly extensive set of facilities. It's a long linear pipe so that it distributes the water evenly across a broad area. And it infiltrates just to the west there is District Well Nine, and then you can see further north and west Wells Seven and Eight, also owned by the district. I'm going to zoom in again to the area outlined in the yellow dash. So here's a blow-up. You can see the linear shape of the infiltration gallery. MW3 stands for Monitoring Well Three, which is a monitoring well that was installed to assist ecology in collecting water quality data. It is underground, so it goes down through the gravel where the water infiltrates. And it's approximately thirty feet away from the center of the infiltration gallery. Then further to the west of that, about six hundred feet away, is Well Nine. That's the district's production well. Paul?
I'm sorry, real quick. A couple, Dan, you've said ecology a couple times, could you just clarify that? You just said ecology.
Department of Ecology.
State Department.
State Department of Ecology.
Thank you.
The next slide will be a cross-section. So if you were to slice this and look north, so from the bottom up, this is a cross-section of what that would generally look like. So the valley floor, which is represented there where Well Nine is located, it's relatively flat. We move up a bench that's about fifty feet tall to an area where the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery was constructed. That's actually a man-made bench that was carved into the hill. And that consists of the pipe there that you see in the blue with Monitoring Well Three just to the west of that. Under all of that, in the blue, that represents, this is schematic only at this point, so, you know, don't read too much into the graphic. The blue is a depiction of the Lower Issaquah Valley Aquifer, and that's the underground lake that sits under all of the Samamish Valley floor. It's saturated sands and gravels, and the level of that varies seasonally and with how much we're pumping from the aquifer for potable water purposes and by how much is infiltrating. So it's shown here as a straight line. It actually moves up and down a little bit and changes shape a little bit depending upon other activities in the area. Above that is the Vados Zone. The Vados Zone is unsaturated sand and gravel. So that's, water is free to move through the Vados Zone because it's porous, but it is not surcharged. It's not covered in water and generally has water in it and also air in it. The Vados Zone is very important to this discussion because the Vados Zone is generally, in most stormwater systems, the feature below a bioswale or a rain garden or an infiltration system that provides treatment to the water. It is also the area above which ecology regulates the quality of stormwater and groundwater. So ecology regulates what's in the blue area. And we're responsible by the time we, the water gets to the blue area, to meet certain water quality standards. Now I've also shown in there a sloping line that's an aquitard. An aquitard is a barrier to water moving freely through the sands and gravels. And aquitards, this is again schematic only in this picture. Aquitards exist in this geological feature as layers of compressed silt and other fine material that doesn't pass water very well. There's multiples of those. They're stacked one on top of the other. And they're discontinuous, east to west, north to south. So there's holes in these aquitards, and there's various aquitards. The aquitards impede the vertical flow of water through the Lower Issaquah Valley Aquifer, so through the LIBA. Water is relatively freely free to travel laterally, but is relatively confined in a vertical direction. The next slide now, I'm going to zoom in on the infiltration pipe itself. So starting at the top of that slide is a bioswale. And the bioswale sits at the ground surface. It's several hundred feet long and about fifty feet wide. It has six, or twelve, separate bioswale cells in it. It takes the water that comes out of the Upper Reed Pond, which has now been treated twice, once by source controls and once by a settling and residence process in the Upper Reed Pond, and treats it yet a third time by distributing the water through saturated soil and vegetation mix. And that soil and the vegetation removes any residual pollutants that happen to be in that stormwater. The stormwater moves through the bioswale, and there is some piping that is not shown for clarity here. It's collected in pipes at the ends of the bioswale, taken underground and discharged into the infiltration pipe. And the infiltration pipe is just a twelve-inch diameter plastic pipe, several hundred feet long, laid level, that has perforations in it. So it fills with water, stormwater runs out of those perforations into the ground, then moves vertically and, to some extent, laterally through the gravel in the ground, through the Vados Zone, until it reaches the LIBA, the Lower Issaquah Valley Aquifer. So if we unwind in time now, I want to go back and describe some of this area operationally and what has happened with the LREG so you can understand the context of tonight's discussion. I don't know how long ago, but at least in nineteen sixty-four, we have an aerial photo that shows this area being used for infiltration. And the Reed Sand and Gravel Company, which operated on this site for many, many years, used this area to discharge their rainwater and their processed water when it was too turbid to discharge to Lake Samamish. So they had a permit to discharge stormwater to Lake Samamish unless it was turbid. When it was turbid, they pumped it to this area at at least twelve CFS, and they infiltrated water here for more than forty years. In nineteen ninety-one, the district drilled Well Number Nine just to the west of this area. And in two thousand and six, Port Blakely bought this piece of property for the express purpose to use it for infiltration. And the reason they did that is because they had seen that the Reed Sand and Gravel Operation had discharged their stormwater there at a very high rate, twelve CFS, for years and years and years. This is very turbid stormwater. And there was no evidence that there were any adverse environmental or aquifer impacts as a result of that. There was not contaminated water coming out of the city's wells. There was not contaminated water coming out of Well Nine. There was not breakout on the hills. There was no evidence in the creeks. So there was every reason to believe that this was an area, a geologic area, that had the ability to assimilate lots of dirty stormwater. And Port Blakely used that for a three- or four-year period to discharge construction stormwater from their construction operations in Issaquah Highlands. Now they dialed the rate back a little bit, and they discharged at a peak rate of about eight CFS, and that happened for a couple of years, until two thousand and eight. In two thousand and eight, the Washington State Department of Ecology became concerned that this practice was safe. And they were concerned about two things. The quality of the raw stormwater, were there contaminants in it? And was the level of contaminant predictable or not? So that was concern number one. The second concern was the ability of the Vados Zone to remove those contaminants. So they issued an action order to the city and asked them to stop infiltrating, which the city did, and to begin a period of, as it turns out, a three-year period of very extensive and intensive monitoring. And in this case, the monitoring is water withdrawn from Monitoring Well Three, so that monitoring well that sits just to the west of the infiltration gallery, to monitor both the groundwater and the stormwater to determine what the contaminants were in that stormwater, if anything, and how variable they were. That occurred then until today. And the reason we're here today is ecology has, has finished the analysis of that monitoring data, and they're ready to take action on that. And I'm going to show you next the results of that monitoring data. What's going to happen next, though, What's going to happen next, though, and I think this has -- there's been some confusion about this course of action, but what's not on the table next is that we begin to operate the infiltration gallery. What's next is that we enter the second phase of monitoring for the infiltration gallery, where we begin to infiltrate water, and we monitor the capability of the Vados Zone to remain -- to remove residual contaminants. We'll be, if assuming that we accept those conditions and ecology offers those, and that's in a permit that is pending, that's likely to be issued within the next two months. Assuming we're agreeable to those terms, this will simply be another monitoring phase where we check to see if our assumptions about the Vados Zone are accurate. If they are, and the Vados Zone is effective at protecting public health and safety as far as aquifer contaminations occur, then we'll move on to the next phase of permitting, which may be that we're allowed to operate the infiltration gallery for some extended period of time. If the monitoring results, though, show that we cannot control the quality of the water, then we'll either be asked to reevaluate the system and provide additional treatment so that we change the raw water quality, or we'll be asked to stop infiltrating altogether. So we are not on the precipice of an operating program for the L rig. We're on the precipice of the second phase of monitoring. The city has been a close partner with the Department of Ecology and with the Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District, and we've developed a monitoring program. We share the data from that, and we all discuss and react to the implications of that. And so now I want to describe what we've discovered. So of the couple of hundred possible contaminants in stormwater, we, through a preliminary sampling program in collaboration with ecology and with the district, narrowed down our contaminants of concern to just eight items. So most of the contaminants were deemed to be so unlikely to occur in water or so unlikely to cause a health risk that we simply didn't look for those. And these are exotic compounds that would come from chemical processes that are not happening in the Highlands, so it's very unlikely they would occur. But we settled on eight constituents that we were going to monitor and watch. Six of them are listed on this slide, and they include dissolved solids, manganese, total organic carbon, arsenic chloride, and zinc. Now, I've built each one of these graphs so that the drinking water standard is at the same point on each graph. Now, you notice there isn't one for total organic carbon. That's because there is no drinking standard for total organic carbon. It's not a contaminant in groundwater. It's not a contaminant in drinking water. The blue bars are the actual water quality data from the monitoring wells, from the stormwater. And you can see that some of those are missing. Those are either samples that there was no detection of that element in the sample or they were otherwise deemed to be unsuitable. But generally speaking, this is the data for two winters of stormwater runoff. And you can see in all cases here that this is below the drinking water standard. I'm just going to pause. Below the drinking water standard for our runoff. There were, however, two constituents where we did have detecs above the drinking water standards. The first of those was iron. So in two of our samples over that two-winter period, we had two samples where the drinking water standard of .3 milligrams per liter was exceeded. Significantly, though, in this aquifer, this aquifer has pockets of natural iron that occur in it. What I mean by that is you can drill a monitoring well at one location in the valley floor, and we've measured iron greater than 1 milligram per liter, three times the drinking water standard. You can move 100 feet away from that location and drill another well, and there won't be any iron. In other words, this aquifer is very variable in its ability to capture and assimilate iron. There's iron periodically in the potable water wells, and periodically they aren't. The point here is that even though our stormwater exceeds the drinking water standard, we don't exceed the background levels that are in the aquifer. Ecology is not very worried about iron, especially since iron is not a public health risk in drinking water. It's an aesthetic risk. So it'll stain your clothes, it'll stain your plumbing fixtures. It's not a health risk. The last item is the one that is getting scrutiny, and that's total coliform. So of all the samples we collected over that two-year period, we had one sample where the total coliform exceeded the water -- the drinking water standard, and the drinking water standard is zero. So there's no coliform allowed in drinking water. Now, this is not unusual. All stormwater has coliform in it. It's present in the lake, every wetland, every roadside ditch, every stormwater system, every bioswale, every rain garden. The normal process for removing coliform from stormwater is to pass it through soil. It's to pass it through the Vados Zone that lies underneath the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery. So the next phase of our testing, the one that ecology is likely to enable within the next couple of months, is for us to reintroduce infiltration. So take our stormwater, which has been bypassed for the last three years, begin to infiltrate it again, and to monitor intensively at Monitoring Well 3 to see if all -- if we have any coliform hits. Now, that could be a result of one of two things. Either our inlet water quality has too much coliform in it, or the Vados Zone doesn't have enough treatment capability to remove that residual coliform, or a combination of those two. But if we get coliform hits out of Monitoring Well 3, then we'll have to go back to the drawing board and either do something else with the stormwater so that it has less coliform in it, or we'll have to decide to do something else with the stormwater other than infiltrate. We will not be allowed to discharge coliform-laden stormwater into the aquifer. So this is where we are today. The next steps are, we're waiting for ecology to issue a state waste discharge permit. It will be the first time the state of Washington has regulated stormwater with a waste discharge permit. Normally, the process for this are based upon BMPs. BMPs are an acronym for Best Management Practices. The theory is that if you carry out certain items, and in this particular case, we would have met that criteria for BMPs in that we have three treatment trains on our stormwater. In a BMP-based system, all other stormwater systems in the state, if you successfully implement the BMPs, you're assumed to have clean stormwater, and the stormwater is then legal to discharge. This will be the first stormwater system where the actual water quality is going to be monitored and regulated, and it not assumed to be clean, but we have to prove that it's clean. I'm assuming that we'll accept the terms of that permit, and we're negotiating with ecology for the final configuration of that, and we expect that very shortly. And I think that concludes my formal presentation, and would love to take questions.
Questions from the City Council. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. Your last comment was about the water discharge permit versus the other method.
The waste discharge permit.
Sorry, waste discharge permit. And that it would be the first time for ecology. Is this a stricter type of standard?
Well, I think stricter in this case is an opinion. In my opinion, it's stricter in that we're required to meet, to prove that we meet a specific standard rather than an assumption that we're meeting a specific standard. So I think the logical conclusion is that it's stricter. Now, the standard is the same. We can't -- we have to meet the drinking water standards, and we cannot pollute the aquifer, but the compliance with it is stricter criteria.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barber.
Can I follow up on that? So is this going to be the new standard that all wells in the state are going to have to adhere to?
I'm not sure I can answer that. I'm sure, as you're aware, ecology is changing the rules for stormwater treatment and discharge across the state. They -- we have, for now, a couple of years been under the Phase 2 discharge requirements, and are currently writing the Phase 3 discharge requirements. All of those iterations are stricter than the standards that came before them. To what extent this now becomes normal practice or not is going to be up to ecology, and I really can't say.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Dan, there was a slide where you had the cross-section showing the pipe in the ground. Yeah, that one right there. So the water is spilled out onto the surface. I'm trying to get a picture of where the water enters into this. It's out, I think it says bioswale.
Yes, the -- I'm assuming you can see the cursor there?
Yeah.
The water enters on the surface of the bioswale. So it comes down the hill in an enclosed pipe that's buried, comes out of the hill just before it gets to the bioswale, and water just runs into the bioswale. The bioswale is a series of concrete curbs that are all laid flat, and there's landscaping in between. And the curbs are there to distribute this surface flow of water evenly across the various cells in the bioswale, with then the hydraulic mechanism that water flows through the vegetation to the other end. So it's surface flow across what looks like a garden.
Okay. And so, and then the rest of it, I see underground there, there's this infiltration pipe. Now, do these exist elsewhere? I mean, was this designed and invented and implemented here for us, or where does this come from?
This is a very common stormwater treatment device. So bioswales are very commonly employed. There's probably a bioswale in every municipality in Washington State. This is not new technology, and it's not innovative technology. It's a very common treatment device.
In combination with the infiltration pipe, I guess, the whole thing.
In combination with the infiltration pipe. And you're probably familiar with the infiltration pipe on a smaller scale, a rooftop infiltrator, a French drain on your property. You know, this is -- this happens to be a little bit longer than a lot of those, but there are dozens of these elsewhere in Issaquah Highlands on a smaller scale.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very enlightening presentation. We've had a lot of folks come here and say that we're on the verge of putting polluted water into the same water that we serve to our citizens by way of the local Issaquah Valley Aquifer. We're working closely with the Department of Ecology, and they are the ones really that are driving the train, if you will, on this. And that everything they're doing is, and we're doing, is based on best available science. And it's not just based on best available science, but it looks like it's based on rigid monitoring requirements and actual data that demonstrates that either works or it doesn't work. Is -- are those statements, you know, correct? Or if not, what should I have said, Dan?
Those statements are correct.
Okay.
And let me add to that something that I just mentioned to the Semamish City Council. It's unfortunate that a council is presented with conflicting data from different professional sources. And what I wanted to leave with them was the concept that we're not asking them to believe the district's consultants or the city's consultants. What's important to recognize is that ecology, the organization that's charged by the state with ensuring public safety in this regard, is a partner in this process and has been for many years. They are legally obligated to perform the watchdog role, and they're doing that. They've been very strict with us. We have had to comply with standards that are higher than any other municipality has had to encounter so far, and there isn't any reason to believe that they won't be successful in their due diligence.
Thank you, Dan.
Comment? Yes, Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, and I think you have another slide that shows the time history. So this seems important to me. This says 15 cubic feet per second for decades, and during that time, a well was drilled. So, I mean, do we have -- we must have learned something during this time about the quality of water that was being served to customers. Are you saying -- are we saying that the quality of water served to customers was satisfactory during this time, when the Reed people were dumping it up to 15 cubic feet per second?
I'm not aware of any instances during that period when either the city's wells nor the district's wells had contamination problems or did not meet drinking water standards.
And so, and that's, to me, that's pretty dramatic. And then the next phase of 8 cubic feet per second from Port Blakely, I mean, that seems pretty dramatic to me, too. That's -- were they using something just like -- they were using this L rig, Port Blakely was?
They were using this facility for discharge of stormwater. They were not using the same treatment facilities that are being used now, and the raw water quality from that operation was worse than the stormwater quality is now.
So you showed us a map earlier with a pond. Was it that pond wasn't there, or what was not there, the bioswale?
That pond was there, but they were not using that pond to discharge. They were -- that pond was not inserted in the middle of the treatment plane. They were bypassing that pond with turbid construction runoff.
Okay. So, all right. So this information seems pretty -- this is very important information, it seems to me. This is that there's history here, and, you know, thanks for bringing that out. I wasn't aware of any of this before.
Looking at Well 9, what treatment does the Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District provide for water that goes through that, goes into their system from Well 9?
I can't speak authoritatively on that, Councilman Butler. I do know what I read in their comprehensive plan, though, and they disinfect at that well, and they introduce pH modifier for corrosion control, at least. Now, what else they might do there, I'm not sure, but their comprehensive plan lists those two treatment processes at that site.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any other questions from the council? Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
The next item to come before the council or to be taken up by the council are committee reports. And I will ask, in the excused absence of Councilmember Martz, is someone presenting information for him? Or does he not have a committee? Okay. I think I'm on old, maybe still functioning under old committee structure. Sorry. With that, I will ask Councilmember Forkner to begin with committee reports.
Thank you. The Council Infrastructure Committee met on May 9th at, in the Pickering Room. We discussed Agenda Bill 6616, the Issaquah Historical Society funding. The Issaquah Historical Society requested $80,000 to purchase a new generator because the old generator does not have the power to support the refurbished trolley car and its electrical demand. Staff explained the Agenda Bill includes a recommendation to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the historical society, do not come back to the city to request additional funds. The committee recommended the transfer of all of the remaining funds, that's $99,251 from the project budget, to the Issaquah Historical Society with the agreement which closes the project. We also provided, the staff provided, the 2014 to 2019 Transportation Improvement Program summary spreadsheet, and we discussed that. Staff informed the committee that an agenda bill setting the public hearing for June 17th was going forward to tonight's meeting, and that there will be more discussion of the TIP on the June 13 infrastructure meeting with the committee going through the prioritization of the projects. We then had a transit service change presentation from David Hall, the Service Planning Supervisor for King County Metro Transit. He explained the various changes to the I-90 corridor peak commuter service and the first alternative service demonstration project that are likely to be approved by the King County Council for implementation at the fall 2013 service change. The intent of the changes to I-90 peak service is to address overcrowding by balancing capacity with demand, improve productivity by filling empty seats, and improving the attractiveness of service to increase ridership. The service changes will go into effect September 2013. The next infrastructure meeting is scheduled for June 13th at 5:30 in the Pickering Room. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Land and Shore met on May 14th. The sole item on our agenda was our continued discussion. was our continued discussion of the changes to the Transfer of Development Rights Code. And we continued to discuss the language and intents behind those changes. And the committee's feedback to staff was that the topic is probably ready to be put into an Agenda Bill to be pro, before the full council, for the full council to determine whether that should be referred back to committee, which would start our official, or I guess the Agenda Bill would start our official public process. Up till now, we've just been having discussions with staff. So you can, I would imagine that that Agenda Bill will be coming forward in the next few weeks, but I don't have a date for that because we didn't have an Agenda Bill. Our next meeting of Land and Shore is June 11th, and assuming the consent agenda passes tonight, our agenda will probably include Agenda Bill 6656 having to do with amendments to the building code. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scher.
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. Services and Safety met on May 13th. There was two items before committee. The first was 6618, which is the Mobile Automated Police, excuse me, License Plate Recognition System. And this is a four-camera system that is fitted onto one police vehicle, and it gives a 360-degree aware, awareness view of the license plate. It'll capture the plate number. And from there, the plates then will be read and cross-checked to confirm by an officer through state and federal systems and agencies in regards to whether this is a stolen vehicle, if there's warrants and warrants out in regards to the driver of the vehicle. The cameras are positioned so that they are going to read the plates only. There will be no face or, or people will be captured in regards to this. There has been some information back to us that other cities and organizations that have began this process have had great success in regard, you know, return of stolen vehicles. So the full committee did recommend that this come back to the full council, so this will be coming back June 3rd to the council meeting. The second item that we looked at is the, on tonight's consent agenda, and it's the Prosecution and Public Defense Contracts. This is due to the state, which has passed new standards with respect to public defense. These standards are scheduled to be into full integration in January of 15, of 2015. These standards will increase the level of service, but also increase the cost to the municipal corporations. So coupling with this information that we had in the current month-to-month contract that the city now has for our public defense system, a need to update our contracts and the identification of cost savings via partnerships with the bordering city. So our underlying purpose was cost containment and also to maximize our service levels. Prosecution services were ripe also for us to take a look at this, and some actions and a way to additionally cost containment and better prosecute, better service. So after engaging in an RFP in the process with the City of North Bend for public defense services and prosecution services, both the Twin Cities Valley Defenders, PLLC for the Public Defense Services, and the Law Office of Lynn Moberly for the Prosecution Service. Both of these, so the effect of these contracts and the inter-local agreement that are, the costs for the prosecution service will decrease by about a third, while the cost for the public defense service will increase by about a third, but the net effect is still going to be a small savings. So with this information, the committee did recommend moving this back, and this will be coming back on this evening's consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to report on last week's Eastside Human Services Forum. It's not a council committee, but it's a regional committee that I participate in. And just for a reminder, real quick, for everybody, the purpose of the Eastside Human Services Forum, the Eastside Human Services Forum facilitates public and private partnerships to ensure a strong coalition of health and human services resources that benefit all East King County residents. The forum does this by advocating for funding to benefit people in need, bringing people, groups, and services together to maximize resources, educating and influencing decision-makers, and proactively impacting regional issues. The City of Issaquah partners with other east side cities, Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Mercer Island, and a number of human services agencies in this forum. And all council members from Issaquah and members of the public are invited to a seminar coming up on June 6th. It's from 7:30 to 9:30 a.m. at the North Bellevue Community Center. And if you want to find out more about that, it, you can just Google "Eastside Human Services Forum." It'll take you to their website. And they have information about the, the conference there. But this is a conference about, about homelessness in the east side. And the, the invitation is to come join community leaders, elected officials, and service providers for a free summit featuring local experts, speaking about the system and policy changes that will impact how we meet our goal of ensuring everyone has access to safe and healthy homes. So there are speakers from King County Housing and Community Development, the City of Bellevue, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, local agents, human service agencies, Friends of, Friends of Youth, LiveWire, and also from the Corporation for Supportive Housing. So I've been attending numerous of these forums, or summits, as they call it, as well, over the years. And it really is a really, an excellent opportunity to network with community members and other leaders in human services and other elected from the east side, and, and discussing and talking about solutions related to human services funding. So everybody is invited. Now, Redmond had six council members at the last one, and I was challenged to see if I could meet or beat that. I said, I will, I will invite my colleagues on the council, invite my friends and, and fellow community members from Issaquah to come as well. So again, it's June 6th from 7:30 to 9:30 a.m. at the North Bellevue Community Center, and you can Google "Eastside Human Services Forum" to get more information. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council held a work session on May the 13th. There were three topics that we, we spent considerable time on. The first was the Kohani Potential Annexation Area Annexation Study. The second was the Parks and, potential for a Parks and Recreation Bond. And the third was a new funding model for east side fire and rescue. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mayor's report. First item, there will be an executive session meeting this evening to discuss two items, the first of which is potential acquisition of property. And that is under RCW 42.30.110 bracketed 1 bracketed B. And that item is expected to take approximately 20 minutes. No action is anticipated concerning that item. The next item is a discussion with legal counsel concerning potential litigation. That's RCW 42.30.110 bracketed 1 bracketed C. And I'll ask if we have a time expectation on that one. Yes. Bracketed I. Both of those were bracketed I's. In that case, 20 minutes? All right. And no action is anticipated following that one. Okay? Second item, Issaquah is currently studying the potential impacts of annexing nearly two square miles known as the Kohani Potential Annexation Area. And to help explain the findings of the study that's been conducted on that, the second of two public meetings will be held on Wednesday, May 22nd, the day after tomorrow, at 7:00 p.m. at Challenger Elementary School. And for more information, please visit our website at issaquahwa.gov/kohani. Next item, throughout the morning of May 17th, close to 90 bike commuters stopped at Issaquah's Bike to Work Day Station located on Northwest Sammamish Road, and they stopped there for snacks, tune-ups, and information. I imagine the tune-ups were for the bicycles. The station was hosted by the City of Issaquah and by the Cascade Bicycle Club. The third item, please be advised that in observance of Memorial Day, city offices will be closed on May 27th. And with that, I will ask the council if accounts have been reviewed.
They have.
And then I will ask the council's pleasure on the consent agenda, or consent calendar. Councilmember Butler.
I would move approval of the consent calendar as submitted.
Second.
Okay, moved by Butler and seconded by Winterstein. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we are moving into Section 8, Regular Business. And the first item is Agenda Bill 6620, Submittal of 2014, Community Development Block Grant Capital Funds. And this is an application for Northwest Dogwood Street improvements. Do we have a presentation? All right. Yes, could you please comment on that?
Yeah. This Agenda Bill requests council's consideration to authorize a submittal of a Community Development Block Grant application to King County for sidewalks along Northwest Dogwood Street. In late March 2013, King County announced the 2014 CDBG Capital Funds Grant Opportunity. Issaquah filed a pre-application for the Northwest Dogwood Street Improvement Project by the April 5th, 2013 deadline. After site review, the project was deemed eligible for full application by King County staff. The final application requires proof of city council approval of the application's submission, submittal, which is due May 31st, 2013. The project proposed for the grant application is for that section of Northwest Dogwood between Newport Way and Issaquah Creek. It is proposed to include raised five-foot wide sidewalks, five-foot landscape medium buffers, curb and gutter, and filling in the paved areas between the existing roadway, as well as necessary drainage improvements. It also includes removal and replacement of existing non-standard sidewalks across existing driveways and curb ramps that do not meet Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA standards. The total estimated project cost is $571,800. The CDBG grant funds would account for $350,000, and the city match funds would be $221,800. Design for this project is anticipated to begin in 2014 with construction in 2015. The city's matching funds would need to be budgeted in the Street Improvement Fund in 2014 with expenditures occurring over the time periods of 2014 and 2015. And with that, I would move to authorize the submission of the City of Issaquah's 2014 CDBG Capital Funds Grant Application for the Northwest Dogwood Street Improvement Project.
Second. Moved by Forkner and seconded by Barber. Questions or discussion from the council on this? Yes, Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. So Dogwood gets a lot of traffic. It is certainly surrounded, there, it goes through, there's residential on both north and south. It, and, and, you know, I think it's a very important arterial, not only for vehicles, but for those residents. It crosses the creek, Issaquah Creek. And, and I know that we've had it on our radar. I'm going to ask maybe my colleague, Councilmember Scher can help me with a little bit of background information on where it's, where it's, where this particular corridor for street improvement has been in our ranking. But, you know, I, I know that we have heard from residents, and people who live there have reached out to us and asked us to do something about it. I was very pleased when I saw this application come, come through. So I like the idea that we potentially really could do something for the benefit of our residents, for a corridor that needs it, for the safety, and just overall quality of, quality of life in that area. Josh?
Thank you.
To answer Councilmember Winterstein's question, it was high on the list. And if memory serves, I believe it was number seven, or thereabouts, on our last capital improvement plan that the city adopted last year, right either above or below the Three Trails Crossing intersection, which was also a high priority. So, and it's been high on that CIP list for several years. So this is a great, great step in moving us forward on that particular project.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Council ready then to act upon this motion to authorize the submission of Issaquah's 2014 CDBG Capital Funds Grant Application to the Northwest Dogwood Street Improvement Program or project? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. The next item under Regular Business is the adoption of Agenda Bill 6660, City Goals for 2014. Councilmember Butler, were you going to speak to that? You looked like you were.
I would, I'd be delighted. We, we held a council retreat on May the 4th with council members and city staff to develop prioritized goals for budget guidance for the 2014 proposed budget. That process, just a few words about that, but individual council members submitted goals. Staff replied to those goals with budget implications and some thoughts about how they could be implemented. All of the goals listed here had a majority vote from council members. And although they are listed from 1 to 11, they're not in any priority order, and all of those are equal priority now at, at this time. Unfortunately, one of our council members was not present at that, but the council member who's excused this evening, Tole Martz, did a, a great job, Paul, in presenting your goals. And I'm happy to report that both of those are on the list tonight. So with that, I would move to approve the 2014 city goals as presented.
Second.
Okay, moved by Butler and seconded by Winterstein. Discussion or questions from the council? Councilmember Scher.
I want to thank especially Councilmember Winterstein for putting together some procedures in advance of our retreat this year. Having gone through a number of these now, it seems like the process has evolved and evolved in a positive direction. And I think Councilmember Winterstein did a very good job of putting together some mathematics, if you will, of how our voting would turn out. And then he had to go and be absent, so it completely threw off all the math. But, but it led to a pretty good outcome in the sense that we were able to get goals that were adopted by a majority of the council, a process that was both transparent and efficient. It felt like we were moving through the agenda pretty good this year in particular. And I'm particularly pleased to see that we have some transportation-related goals on the, the list this year. We didn't the previous year. And so I'm glad to see that's making a bit of a comeback in terms of our prioritization and importance, given that traffic and traffic control is a big issue for citizens in our community that we hear about quite frequently. So it's nice to prioritize that. But I wholeheartedly support these goals, and I look forward to having us implement them in the next fiscal year. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I would echo Councilmember Scher's comments about the well-put-together plan for the day. And I wanted to comment, too, that I thought the responses to, by staff, to this year's goals were just extremely well-done. They were well-thought-out. They were thorough. They were, they were positive. And I really appreciated, I really appreciated that. The council goals, too, I thought were, I was impressed by all of them. They were very creative. They were very well-thought-out. They were very creative, they were very well-thought-out, and they were just very, very thoughtful. And I was impressed by all of them, and I know I'm not the only one who was sorry to have run out of votes before I could put more votes on, on the, on the score sheet. One of the comments I did want to make as, sort of get it on the record, is that, as Councilmember Scher mentioned, we did kind of move at a pretty good clip. And, you know, I know there, you know, we had until 2:00, we didn't take until 2:00, which was, which was great. I think even if we had gone a little bit longer, I'm not, I'm not sure that, I feel like we get a long enough time to contemplate the goals and talk amongst ourselves and see how we might be able to put them together a little better and understand each other's goals a little better. And I'm not talking about people understanding mine, I'm particularly talking about understanding others' goals and the intentions behind those goals and thinking of ways that we might be able to accomplish more on the list. And so as a year from now or 10 months from now, we start thinking about our goal-setting session, it's something I'm going to be thinking about, if there's some way that we can extend that process a little bit and talk about that. But other, other than that, I, I think it was a great day. It was a great venue up at Swedish, and I only had to drive a couple minutes to get there. That was awesome.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, it was, I believe, a very concise day, and it was very nice to be able to stay on track and keep moving forward fast and accomplish what we wanted to. There's a couple of pieces in here that I think first, there was a lot of long-term looking in regards, and the very first one of our goals is looking long-term for the financial planning and both operations and capital, and that's great. But we're also looking long-term here in regards to talking about perhaps the city campus at some time point. We've sort of talked about this in the past, but not really put anything down. And then two other good highlights that I always feel are very important is, is making sure we're looking at, you know, the economy. And what are we doing as a council and as council goals to make sure the economy of the city businesses keep moving forward, and what can we do to keep enhancing that and making this a very vibrant city in which a business would want to come to and those that are here want to expand and stay with us. And for me, the, the last is also the green part of Issaquah. And what everyone, I think, values highly is our parks and our streetscapes, that green infrastructure that is making Issaquah such a wonderful place to live. And it's good to see that it's still a very strong goal that we put a very good attention to and importance in. So I think overall, it was a great day, and, and thanks to Councilmember Butler for just keeping us on task and getting us out of there on time. It was duly appreciated, especially with the sun being out. Thank you.
Other comments or discussion? Is the council then ready to vote on the motion to approve the 2014 city goals as presented? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. The next item before the council this evening is consideration of supporting a 2013 Washington State Transportation Investment Package. And as the council is, is well-aware throughout the course of this legislative session, the regular session, we had stated our preferences and our thoughts about the legislative items that were being proposed by the, by the legislature, and we had talked in some general ways about transportation. And the council will see a summary statement that this year's legislature is considering a 12-year, $9.5 billion package of transportation infrastructure investments. Those are related or are presented there, and at one point, I remarked that I had gone down to Olympia and had spoken to, in support of Senate Bill, which was then Senate Bill 1954. And council leadership asked for an Agenda Bill to consider taking an official position in strong support of a comprehensive transportation investment package and wanted to ensure that any package before being finalized included investments in the I-90 corridor in and around Issaquah, and strongly encouraged lawmakers to approve and enact this package in Olympia this year. So that's essentially the summary statement on, I will, you see the administration's recommendation? And I will ask Council President Butler if he has some comments. You look like you're...
I do, but before that, I would move to approve Resolution Number 2013-04, in strong support of a transportation investment package.
Second. All right. So there is a motion, which you will wish to discuss and I imagine ask questions about. Councilmember Butler.
These are, these are tough times for transportation and transit. For far too long, not enough has been done, and it's beginning to impact our economy and access to our ports, the threat of a 17% reduction in transit service, of which many of those routes proposed for reduction fall within Issaquah, and those that, for elimination, there are five that have the potential for being eliminated with, I believe, a devastating impact. I don't like to particularly raise taxes. I ask a question during Mr. Postum's presentation about which of the funding votes would, proposals, potential funding tools would go to voters where they would have a choice, and a number of those would either at the King County level or the local level. And so I'm not endorsing any of those funding tools, but we need a transportation package, and we need to send a strong message to our legislators in Olympia that it is important to us. I'm delighted to see in the resolution the emphasis on I-90. A number of those projects are on our legislative agenda, and individual council members and the mayor and our lobbyists have been working, trying to secure funding for that. Given our interest in the I-90 corridor and in the region and transit and the devastating impacts is, is why I am supporting this resolution of strong support, asking that something be done.
Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have a question about the timing or maybe the scope of this, and maybe I'm not understanding the resolution. So Governor Inslee signed a transportation package today. It's about $8.7 billion package. It's not a funding package. It, it deals with the transportation improvements around the state, which he adopted, along with actually some vetoes of some specific projects. So is this resolution asking the legislature to take a position with respect to simply how to fund those things which the governor has approved? Because it seems to be a fait accompli as to the actual projects which are to be funded since the governor has signed it. So I'm just trying to understand what we're asking for. Are we talking specifically about funding here? Because Section 2 seems to talk about the package itself and investments in the corridor, which are project-related, but Section 1 seems to talk about funding options. Section 2 seems to already be a done deal based on my understanding of the events of today.
So as far as I know, the Senate and the House are still working through a transportation package that got delayed at the end of a German of the regular session. So there was a special session coming up, there were a whole variety of things. It is a 12-year, $9.5 billion package that's in front of those. As a matter of fact, the mayor and I just met with one of our representatives to discuss what's in that package and to make sure that Issaquah interests are represented in that. So I'm unsure, I don't have any information about what you're talking about.
If I may, The Seattle Times reported late today before our meeting that the governor had signed the transportation package. It was $8.7 billion with some vetoes, I believe, including the Columbia River Crossing. So that, that was my last information, is that it had been signed, but the funding hadn't been figured out, and Ron may know something more recent than I do.
Well, and I think so the distinction, I believe, is that the bill the governor signed today was the current law budget, which spoke to how existing transportation revenues would be allocated to projects, to the Transportation Improvement Board, et cetera. And I think what we're talking about in this resolution is the issue of, you know, how are we going to deal with the funding gap with a new law revenue measure, which is what would happen if there was a gas tax increase, what would happen if there's a local option, new local op, op, tools. So I think that's the distinction. The bill, I know for sure the bill that was signed today was one that was premised on only taxes that have been in place for a while.
Right. And that was my point, I guess, is Section 1 talks about funding, and I wholeheartedly support the idea of funding projects that will benefit our community. I just wasn't sure between the time this was written and today's events whether Section 2 of the resolution would have any impact. Are there other projects which are being considered that were not part of the legislation that was signed today? If there are still other projects, then it has a meaning.
Other questions? Or discussion? Councilmember Winterstein.
So just for discussion, what, this, which particular or potential projects along the I-90 corridor in the Issaquah area are in the current proposal that the legislature in this package is considering? Are they, are there named projects?
So there's a large list of projects that we sent out today. Some of them relate to the I-9405 corridor.
I'm sorry, you sent that out today? I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Yeah, that's okay. But we have been, and there was a portion of the revenues that had not been allocated to specific projects, and the ones consistent with the legislative agenda that we have been, our lobbyist has been working on, is the interchange justification report for Front Street, which would also incorporate a portion of the overcrossing, State Route 900, a concept for pedestrian improvements in that area. The current package does include funding for TIB and bike and pedestrian improvements along the state, which we'd be potentially eligible for applying. And then there is the local sales, I'm sorry, gas tax component. One cent of the proposal would go to the city, which would, in Issaquah's case, equate to about $41,900 annually, or about $1.2 million over the 12 years of the whole package. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Or discussion? Councilmember Goodman.
So to clarify, what Governor Inslee signed today was a package of projects. And what is lacking is the revenue side, which is also what I'm getting from the Times article. Am I right?
Looking it up.
Hmm? We're looking it up?
I'll ask Mr. Postum to speak again.
Let me try again, because I don't think I was very clear the first time. So what the governor signed today was a current law revenue budget that assigned dollars to specific projects, specific programs, with revenue available from the current gas tax and other fees. And what is now under consideration in the special session is additional spending on additional projects with new sources of revenue, additional gas tax, additional vehicle fees. So what has, what was enacted today is both spending and revenue, and what is under consideration in the special session is additional spending and additional revenue. So they're both, you know, they come together. But one is that what's currently available and what's at, another is what might be available.
Councilmember Butler.
And so to clarify, what Governor Inslee signed today does not have funding in it for transit. And so the potential $600,000 service hour reduction, if there's not an additional source of revenue, would, would go into effect next year.
That's one example. Councilmember Barber.
And the funding for these new proposed projects are what we had talked about earlier. So an eight percent, eight-cent increase in the gas tax, the $40 Councilmatic Transportation Benefit District Vehicle Fee, and also the 1.5 MVAT renewal fee. And those are where the, the dollars are coming from for this new proposed project list.
Yes, and the gas tax, the state keeps most of that, shares a little bit of it with us at the local level, and then the others are the local option parts that, you know, cities and counties can choose to pursue if they want.
And so with this new eight-cent increase in the gas tax, what does that put our gas tax at? Do you know?
Gas tax currently is 37 and a half cents. And the proposal in the House was to actually phase it in two cents a year over a five-year period. So it's actually a 10-cent increase, but phased in over five years. So it has the same kind of purchasing power as an eight-cent gas tax, if they did it all at once.
So ultimately pushes us close to that 50 cents?
It'd be 47.
Forty, yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Scher.
You know, I want to thank Ron Postum for sticking around and capably filling in on this, these pieces of information. And it's clear to me now that what we're talking about are really two different things. And so we have the, the existing projects and existing revenue, and then the new revenue and new projects. So that's clear to me now, and the resolution certainly makes sense in light of that distinction. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, one element of these, this package as being considered, I think, is extremely important, and I want to echo what Councilmember Butler said as well. I think that public transit provided by Metro is really a, I tell you, you want to sustain your envi, you want to sustain your community. You want to have a healthy community, both environmentally, economically, and socially. You need a very good transportation system, public transportation system, especially, not everybody can afford, and perhaps our region really can't, not everybody can afford their own transportation. Our region really can't afford everybody in their own car. And of course, and that's not what we're talking about eliminating, we're talking about if this isn't approved, a dramatic cut that would impact, you know, our city and many, many people regionally. So I think we look at, you know, the quality of life as it relates to what it's like to be on the roads, and especially if there's decreased public transportation options. I think there would be a pretty significant impact to this. So I think that, that issue alone is very near-term. We saw the slide earlier about the degradation of the roads, and at some point, it's very expensive, you know, or maybe, you know, to prepare a road after it's degraded for some while, and that's something that we as a city work very hard to stay ahead of. But a real reduction in metro service would be an almost an immediate impact to the quality of life... the quality of life of, of a number of our citizens and probably increase the traffic on the road. So that's an element of this, I'm very interested and hope to see pass.
Other questions or discussion? Is the council ready at this time then to act upon the motion which is approving Resolution Number 2013-04 as just described? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. Right, the, next item before the council is an item entitled Reports on Regional Activities and Issues, which I believe this evening you renamed to Good of the Order. So now, items for Good of the Order.
All right, thank you. I didn't know if we were going to go around the, the table for regional reports. I do have a regional report. Eastside Transportation Partnership met on Friday, May 10th. One item that came up actually during public comment was sort of interesting. There was a, a sheet passed around with data from PSRC that shows that there, and I forget the exact figures, I didn't bring it with me, but a, a very low percentage of transit users and a very high percentage of dollars going towards transit, and a very high percentage of road users and a very low percentage of dollars going towards roads. It was just kind of interesting, and it, it covered some of the conversations that, that were had throughout the course of the meeting, but that, that was sort of an interesting public comment presented to us. We did have a legislative session update from the county Executive's Office, which has probably led to some of my confusion on the earlier resolution, because I knew that the funding package was still not completely done, but then what I had heard about the, the package of projects that was passed today, that's what led to my earlier confusion. So as was indicated, there still is discussion going on in Olympia with respect to the gas tax and the funding for transportation statewide. We had a briefing from King County Roads Services Division on the unfortunately crumbling state of county roads and the fact that there are just insufficient revenues for maintaining many of those roads, especially those on a lower priority tier. There was some lament from the representative that many, I took particular note, that many cities are annexing high-value areas and leaving the county with not as many high-value areas to fund their infrastructure. Interesting points made. We also approved our 2012, at last, annual report for ETP, and we had a brief update on PSRC Transportation 2040. Also, the Joint Chairs of the Subarea Boards, ETP, Seashore, and Skateboard all met recently, and we should be fairly close to a new inter-local agreement between the county and each of those respective boards, which has been a fairly lengthy march of progress towards getting that done. And lastly, just a correction on a comment I made earlier, I looked it up, and the Dogwood Street Bridge was number eight on our last CIP, three trails crossing was number seven. I had them backwards in my head, so I wanted to correct that for the record. That concludes my regional report. Thank you.
Any other regional reports? Yes, Councilmember Barber.
Eastside Fire and Rescue is continuing to meet and trying to work through our funding model. There is really no update, but just wanted to let you know, we are still working towards some. It gets difficult trying to find meeting time for so many different members and their difficult schedules. We're working on it. There is a slight plan that we're working on, but I guess we'll just keep you apprised of it, and if any good, exciting news comes forward, we'll let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports or comments? If not, we will recess into executive session, and we'll have a five-minute break. You were, you were good there.